Oops, let me get the mic on. Good evening and welcome to the City of Pasco. A council regular meeting of Monday, July 21st, 2025. The city thanks you for being a part of your government. At regular meetings, the city takes formal action on items. We hold public hearings and we conduct other businesses the city is required. Agenda packets are available for those here on that small table under the blue arrow that notably says agendas for those following along. It's online at www.pasco-w.gov/agenda. This meeting is being televised on PSC TV, Channel 191, on Spectrum Cable in Pasco and Richland. It's also streamed on the city's Facebook page, website, YouTube channel, and via Microsoft Teams. Those in previous council meetings are available on the city's website. The public may submit comments outside of the public comment period through the Ask Pasco app or by contacting the city manager or city clerk. So with that, Ms. Clerk, you can read us the rule.
Yes. Council members Blaisdell.
Present.
Barajas.
Present.
Grim.
Here.
Harpster.
Present.
Peralas.
Here.
Mayor Protan Milne.
Present.
And Mayor Serrano.
I am here.
Thank you.
So with that, if you'll all please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. With that, that moves us along to item number four, which is our executive session. It's a single item. It's to evaluate qualifications of an applicant for public employment under revised code Washington 42.30.110, Subsection 1, Subsection G. It's listed for 10 minutes. It is, I'll just call it 10:03, or 7:03, we'll be back at 7:13. We're going to have the city manager, city attorney, anyone else, Dave?
I think that's it.
That's it. So with that, we're going to go back for exec session behind us here. We'll be back in 10 minutes.
We're all waiting on the problem king. Oh, sorry.
At 7:35, we've returned from executive session. That moves us along to item number five, which is our consent agenda. All items listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council. They'll be acted by a roll call as one motion in the form listed in the packet. There will be no separate discussion of any of these items. If further discussion is requested by any council member, that item may be removed from the consent agenda to the regular agenda and considered separately. So before we go to this, do we have any requests to remove any items? Seeing none, Mr. Milne. All right. So yeah, I should probably read them. So item A is approval of the meeting minutes for July 7th, July 13th, and July 14th. Item B is bills and communications approving claims in the total amount of $5,573,220.55 and a write-off totaling $754,338.31 as delinquent or bad debt. Item C is resolution number 4622 Lonnie and Louis Montez lease agreement portion of parcel number 112330255. Item D is resolution number 4623 awarding bid number 23506 for the 8th Street and 6th Avenue pedestrian crossing improvements project to Ellison Earthworks LLC. And finally, item E is the Tri-City Regional Hotel Motel Commission reappointment of Monica Hammerberg. Mr. Milne.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the consent agenda as written.
Saqra.
Got a motion by Mr. Milne, a second by Ms. Blaisdell. Ms. Clerk.
Great. Councilmember Peralas.
Yes.
Councilmember Harpster.
Yes.
Councilmember Grim.
Yes.
Councilmember Blaisdell.
Yes.
Councilmember Barajas.
Yes.
Mayor Protan Milne.
Yes.
And Mayor Serrano.
Yes.
It passes unanimously.
Thank you, Ms. Clerk. With that, that moves us on to item six, which is proclamations and acknowledgements. We do have one recognition of a phenomenal youth in our community, Ms. Hadley Blazard. Now, she's given some devoted community service. I'll read some things and then maybe Ms. Blazard, you and I will take a picture up here in front of the podium. Council can be with us and then we'll take, let's call it a five-minute resets. I see a lot of family members that probably want pictures and that sort of thing. So the reason we're recognizing Ms. Blazard here tonight is her devoted leadership as Tri-City's Miss, as the Miss Tri-City teen. She's a junior at Chilwana High School. She's got a phenomenal and powerful voice for literacy and dyslexia. Her fundraising efforts and donations brought in over 1,000 dyslexia kits, reading kits, placed them in classrooms, public libraries, and organizations across Washington State. So your determination here is a testament to your commitment to helping your community and to helping those who are underserved. Washington State is a better place for your commitment to your community, and so is Pasco. We greatly appreciate everything that you've done, and every public library in the Tri-Cities and every library in the Pasco School District now carries your kits. So thank you for your leadership. Thank you for your heartfelt commitment. Thank you for raising awareness to this issue that plagues a lot of our kids. Now, a couple other things. Ms. Blazard has maintained a 4.0 GPA while she's been duly enrolled at CBC. She's led her team's cheer team to state championship, and she's also founded Just Serve Club at Chilwana High School. These acts of community service are no small feat, and again, also reflect your community commitment. So Hadley, with your commitment to literacy, education, and community service, that exemplifies the values that we hold dearly in Pasco, your humility, your heart for service, they're truly inspiring, and we appreciate you, and we're grateful to recognize you as a member of our community. So Hadley, if you'll come up here, I'll hand this off to you, and we'll take pictures and do all the fun stuff. All right. It's always great that we get to recognize folks that are serving in our community. I've always suggested there's an open invite. If folks need to be recognized, please, you know, submit names to the city manager's office, and they can clear it through us and through me. So it's great to see our youth giving back to folks that need it. That moves us along to item seven, which are public comment period. Public may address council on items unless it relates to a scheduled public hearing. This item is provided to allow the opportunity to bring items to the attention of the city council or to express an opinion on an issue. Its purpose is not to provide a venue for debate or for posing a question with the expectation of an answer that's immediate. Some questions require consideration by council over time and after deliberative process with input from various folks who may be specializing in a particular area. Citizen comments will be limited to three minutes by myself, and it'll be shown by that clock there to my right. I don't see our clerk, who usually is our clock shot keeper. Oh, she's in the back. Okay. We'll figure it out. With that, you know, anyone with the lengthy message, we ask that you may summarize, and you can submit those comments outside of this if you necessarily need to, to again, the city manager's office or via the Ask Pasco app. So as you address this, please come to the microphone, make sure it's on, you'll see the red light at the base, and provide your name and county of residence. I'm going to kick us off with, it looks like Mr. Michael Duncan is signed up for remote public comment. Is Mr. Duncan on and available? We have some quarterback in that part of the meeting, staff? For remote public comment? Sorry.
We do not have anyone there.
No? Okay. So Mr. Duncan, are you here present? Okay. I guess we'll circle back if we see him on here in the next few minutes. I did see that Ms. Lori Thompson had initially signed up for remote, but is listed as in person. Lori, if you're here, why don't you go ahead and take the first crack at the mic?
Well, I've not been here and done this before, and I'm afraid I've never seen a broadsheet.
It's all right.
I can turn it off.
There's a little speaker, looks like I'm out. There you go, you're on.
Okay, my name's Lori Thompson. I live in the West Pasco neighborhood between 68 Burden Sandifer area, and I've been in that house for about nine years now. And I live in the county of Franklin. I was in attendance remotely at the last regular council meeting on July 7th and commented regarding what I see as a dangerous, uncivil, unhealthy, and illegal free-for-all that happens within the city of Pasco every summer, starting in late June and into mid-July, with fireworks being allowed on our city streets and backyards all across town. While there wasn't really much of a discussion in response, there was a couple of troubling remarks made. One by a Pasco Police Department representative, I believe, explained that citing and confiscating the illegal fireworks takes too much paperwork and time. The other troubling comment was made by a council member, I believe, was that there are a few bad players out there. And it is no secret to the community and this council that this fireworks situation we are now dealing with is out of control, and there are many more than just a few bad players out there. It affects our quality of life in our own homes, rattling the windows and doors where we are doping our pets, fearing our house or roof catches on fire, while the fire department and law enforcement is overwhelmed by the fireworks and other uncivil activities, and many veterans of war suffering post-traumatic stress, anxiety, in listening to what sounds like a war of bombs and missiles next to the house for hours and days and weeks. When is the paper mark not too time-consuming when the self-styled pyrotechnician blows his head off in the street in front of the neighborhood kids? I don't know. To reiterate the obvious, what goes on with fireworks here is dangerous and unnecessary fire risk in the heat of our dry climate. It's unhealthy to breathe, made from many elements known as toxic to the environment and all living things tossed to the street where the refuge and residue washes into our sewer treatment systems and the discomfort of the noise many of us recoil from. I'm here tonight for myself and many other good neighbors, asking for your help in protecting our freedoms to enjoy our property and celebrate in a more peaceful and safe manner. I reviewed the ordinances today regarding fireworks for the city of Pasco, and it seems that there are plenty to back up law enforcement citing and seizing the illegal items. I did not see the part about how they have to actually see the offenses with their own eyes. So I'm hoping that later someone could lead me to that part of the ordinances to where it says.
I'm going to go ahead and ask you to wrap it up.
Okay.
Yeah, unfortunately, our clock's not on, but we have been keeping time.
Oh. Either way, it sounds like there needs to be some changes made and maybe rearranging for more law enforcement. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Do we have any additional public comment? Go ahead, sir.
Hello, my name's Christopher Dare. I'm the new executive director for Columbia Basin Veteran Center, and I'm just coming to say hello. And we actually serve the whole region, but our office is right here in Pasco, and so I was excited to come and meet you. I did leave my card with you, you have it. One of my goals is to meet with each of you guys if possible, just kind of hear your heart for veterans. I'm doing that to all elected officials in the region, just kind of seeing how we can help. One of the things that maybe you know who we are in Pasco, but sometimes I keep hearing that people do not know that what our Veteran Center totally does. And so my goal is to get out there and make sure that we know that. I am a transplant from Nevada, so I just got here about three weeks ago. So I'm learning where everything's at, where the cities are, how to work the bridges, and all that kind of fun things. So it's an honor to be here with you. I do want to invite you September 18th on Thursday from 4, I think it's Thursday, from 4:00 to 6:00, we're going to have an open house, and we're inviting everybody. We're also going to be putting up a Purple Heart parking spot at that time. We'll have news and everybody there. We'd love to see you guys in attendance. You'll get more information from us out there. As I said, you do have my card. I do want to thank Jesse Rice and his team. We've been working with him for the Nevada, I'm sorry, the Veterans Day celebration coming together, and I just appreciate Chris's work, so your team's doing good stuff. Christopher Dare, and hope to see you soon.
Thank you, Chris. To confirm, that was September 18th, 4:00 to 6:00 p.m.
Yes.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your commitment to our community and our veterans. Mr. Ace.
Hello, everybody. Brian Ace, I'm actually a Benton County resident, but here representing Boys and Girls Club. We have an agenda later tonight, and I'm glad to answer questions on that when it gets to that. But as long as I was here, I just wanted to announce something and thank you all for your support of youth in our community. We did just get notice on Saturday evening, our Keystone Club, which is our leadership club for the Pasco clubhouse, was attending the Keystone Conference in Chicago, and it was announced on Saturday evening that they were recognized as the Keystone Club of the Year for Boys and Girls Clubs of America. So the programming taking place at your clubhouse on 18th Avenue is not only being seen locally, but recognized regionally and nationally as well, and we're proud of the work that's taking place there, and thank you for being a part of it. Appreciate it.
Brian, do you have any open house to recognize at or any event?
We will be talking about that tomorrow morning when staff get back in town, and we will absolutely be doing something, and it would be great to have many of you present. In fact, as part of that, we will be launching the National Keystone Year through a live feed. They're going to fly in a team to do that with us for on September 5th. Unfortunately, because of construction, we'll have to do that at a different facility, but it will still be a Pasco-hosted event from that Keystone Club. So we'll definitely have an invite out for that.
Okay, thank you. Please do.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Do we have any additional public comment? Hold on, you just turned off the mic.
Oh, I turned it off.
Yeah. There you go, it's on.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, my name is Kirby Turley. I'm a lifelong Pasco resident. I spent three young, long years in this building right here, through junior high, actually. We've got a sometimes permitted, oftentimes not permitted remodeling fiasco happening behind our house for many years. Typically using nonlicensed individuals that come and go, and according to our neighbor, his current employee came from a work release program and doesn't appear to have journeyman carpenter skills. He can't pass any permanent inspections, so the work continues on and on with no work in sight. Since last fall, the noise has been constant. It's pounding, drilling, cutting, reciprocal saws, using air-actuated nail guns, utility tools. The air compressor runs intermittently all hours, including this weekend. It was still cycling on and off at 3:00 a.m. this morning. In fact, it was still running when I left for this meeting today. Our noise ordinances are ineffective. They're written to make enforcement easy because there's no noise violations between 7:00 and 10:00, seven days a week. That's because you can make as much noise as you want with no regard towards neighbors, 15 hours a day, as I said, seven days a week. We can't sit on our patio and enjoy our backyard for most afternoons or evenings. We can't even sit in our house because the noise is so loud. It interrupts our daily routine. Yesterday, for the 20th, is an example, at 4:00, the noise started and lasted until 7:30 on a Sunday afternoon. And by the reactions I'm getting from conversations with Pasco residents and through social media, we aren't the only family going through this. I believe that my family situation reflects what many other Pasco citizens are going through, but because it's so hard to get any help, people give up. Whether the noise is from a structure remodel, fireworks, music, or a barking dog, there needs to be a way to protect the considerate neighbor from those that could care less about disturbing others. It's my understanding other communities have figured out ways to solve this problem, excuse me, and I know through conversations with Mr. Peralas that he has gathered some information from some other city governments on how they've implemented the ordinance changes for the same reasons. I've used the Pasco Ask Pasco app several times, and the response for everything excluding noise has been great. For noise, not so much. The response was, "The nature of this complaint is noise, and these complaints are to be reported to the Pasco Police Department," as they are happening. "I would encourage you to try talking to the neighbor before calling the police. Case closed." Can the city consider having our code enforcement department work with the police using interdepartmental cooperation with ongoing nuisance noise enforcement upon updating our noise ordinances? 7:00 to 10:00, seven days a week, is not sufficient to allow Pasco citizens to enjoy outdoor spaces with family and friends. In our case, the noise, as I said, the noise permeates inside our house, even while the window's closed. So I'm asking the council to please address our noise issues and noise ordinances and make changes so that Pasco will be a model citizen throughout our continued growth. Thanks to all of you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Do we have any additional public comments? Amber, you turned off the mic. You turned the mic off. It's at the base, there's a little, that guy.
Good baby, you guys. I've got this by now. All right, my name is Amber Wade, and as you know, I have been fighting for my mobile home park for the past two years. What I was not prepared to be talking to you tonight about is suicide. Fireworks. Did you know that July 4th is one of the greatest times to unwind yourself because the paramedics and so forth are busy with other things? I have been dealing with mental health issues for the past 20-some years. I have been able to have help from family, friends, and I have an army spanning decades and the country. Mental health is a very serious issue. Dealing with my mobile home park, I have taken care of veterans while the fireworks have been going on. When I worked at the VA Medical Center in Walla Walla, I am now medicating my dogs who have been trained to be around fireworks. They are agitated. I am agitated. And I do have PTSD, PTSD, which I did not even think that I would ever have to speak to you today about. But this last Saturday, I was admitted into, not one ER, but two, because I apparently had a post-traumatic stress disorder breakdown. My shaking was so severe, I lost my capability of using my voice to be able to speak. I have been fighting for two years, and I have never been in a fight-or-flight response for this long. It has finally showed up in my physical body, no matter how much I have tried to hide it. So yes, fireworks, this is not what I was meant to, I did not think that I was going to be speaking to you about, but you need to protect the people that are suffering from mental health, our animals, our veterans, and you can do something about it. If my mobile home park, if the neighbors are being fun and they set up a mobile firework and they light up my house on fire, it doesn't matter because they can afford to pay for it. So it's a big loss. Is fireworks really that important that we are putting our veterans, our dogs, and my very own health at risk? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wade. Do we have any additional public comment tonight? We'll go to the back then, Ms. Milne. Good evening.
Augusto Sergi.
I'm glad to be here.
Soy el papá de Gracie. Hace dos años vine porque me festejaron hoy, cumplo 80 años. Y siempre me gusta andar ahí con los homeless. Y una vez a Gracie, el que es gobernador ahora, nos hizo una junta y me dijo que necesitan para Pasco. Y yo le dije, yo les he puesto nombre a homeless, homeless, porque ellos andan siempre 24 horas drogados y alguien tiene que ayudarlos.
Good evening, I'm Gracie's dad. I came here about a couple of years ago because tomorrow they're celebrating my 80th, and I spend a lot of time with the homeless people. And when I was with Gracie, we had a meeting with the governor, and he was asking what he could do for us, and I told him about a term that I refer to, the homeless, homeless, to the people that are constantly on the street for 24 hours.
Y entonces hoy me recordé que hicimos una promesa, él me hizo una promesa, le dije que se puede ser, dijo mira, si tú eras así, me quedo de gobernador, yo te voy a dar para que hagas algo para los homeless, homeless, ¿verdad?
And I was remembering the promise that he made me. He said, "If I am governor, pray to God, and I will be able to help you out so we can do something about the homeless, homeless."
Entonces quería ir a hablar con él, felicitarle y a platicar de esa historia que tuvimos al principio cuando andaba corriendo, y nuestro deseo es que, pues él se dijo, es para Pasco, estaba la mayor aquí con nosotros y otras diez personas, y se dijo a mí y dijo yo ayudo mucho a los homeless. Y se dijo a mí y dijo, yo ayudo mucho a los hombres. Él se dije, pero estos tenemos que hacer algo, necesitan mucho amor y alguien hay que ayudarles.
I was congratulating him and remembering when he was running. And I reminded him about the promise that he made and he's directed himself to me about the homeless, homeless because we have to do something about them here in Pasco.
Y yo porque quería hablar con el mayor, para explicarle mejor antes de ir a hablar con el gobernador, este, a ver qué podemos hacer.
That's why I wanted to speak with the mayor before I go speak with the governor to see what we could do about it here in Pasco.
Sí, todavía podemos hacer algo.
Is there something that could be done about it?
Gracias por su atención.
Thank you for your.
Thank you. Usually we don't respond immediately. Like, go ahead and translate if you want.
Generalmente nos damos una respuesta.
Ah, sí, yo sé.
But certainly, you know, you can ask some of the staff members maybe if there's a specific item.
Pero si tiene una pregunta en específico, se puede dirigir a los trabajadores de la ciudad.
Okay.
And then we can get that information to the governor.
Okay.
Happy birthday. At the young age of 80.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional public comments? Thank you, Ms. Melanie. You've been patiently waiting. Thank you.
Mary Mahoney, Pasco resident to Pasco via RCW 42.56, CMNs to below. Recently, a longtime Pasco resident addressed council stating, quote, "Pasco is cramming everybody in like sardines in these new subdivisions and Pasco is building a slum." He continued, "Council needs to tell its staff on the left what to do instead of staff telling council what to do," end quote. Pasco's basically a money grab now, a feeding frenzy for developers and for the chosen few. With Pasco's CIP budget of well over a half a billion taxpayer dollars, how much are we, the taxpayers, paying out to the staff on the left? That is, Pasco City Attorney Lee Kerr, his proxies, and the Kerr Law Group. How much do we pay GMP consultants with Pasco City Manager Dave Zabel as its senior consultant? How much do we pay out to ex-Pasco Mayor Matt Watkins and/or Watkins Endeavor LLC at a rate of just under $11,000 per month to him plus his travel expenses? See Matt Watkins on KVIEW News, 71825 and this morning. Regarding Phase One and Two of the Pasco Aquatic Center, Mr. Watkins does not mention the cost and the ongoing maintenance of the aquatic center, nor the cost of the WOW Factor wave machine that costs anywhere from $22 million to $280 million. List the funds scheduled for a low barrier homeless shelter for people and for a low-cost spay neuter clinic for dogs and cats. Currently, it's at zero. Provide fines paid by Pasco and spot zoning developers Hayden Homes for killing our eight floodplain American bald eagles and their eaglets. See 500 photos. Provide a permit number 404 that allows Pasco to develop and destroy our floodplain. Include clean water violations and recent flood history. Provide all past and present ULID and LID designs for my property with start dates, cost, and US mail notice to me. Include all Pasco staff and officials communications regarding harassment and retaliation against me and my property. See Pasco Council playbook regarding Eichmeyer Roundy on 5/23/22. See my request to Pasco Council on 6/2/25 and more regarding animal control and/or TCAS involving animal cruelty theft, the WSU Animal Research Contract with Animal Control, Pasco City Attorney Lee Kerr's authorization of no due process at Animal Control, and racial discrimination at Animal Control. See my files. Provide all federal and state agencies investigating Pasco for animal cruelty, fraud, corruption, and more. My comments are for the record and to put Pasco on notice.
Thank you. Any additional public comment? Going once, going twice, third time. I will make one last call for Mr. Duncan. Do we see him? All right. With that, we're going to move along to item eight, which is reports from committees or officers. Do we have any reports from council members? Seeing none, that moves us on to item 8B, which is our general fund monthly report. Ms. Garcia, do we have someone standing in for?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I will be standing in for Ms. Garcia. What you have in front of you is a general fund report for the month of May. And as you can see, there's a lot better set of data as you see month to month as, as the year goes by. Earlier in the first couple of months, it's a lot of data that is skewed a little bit because we have to and are required to do some accounting entries from prior years and reverse them and things like that. The key thing that I view from this report is essentially that in terms of our expenses, we're in line. Your salaries and your benefits are your key ones. I look at usually, those are linear expenses, so your, we are about 21% of the way through. And if I see anything more than 25% for salaries or benefits, then you know that there's, there's something that you need to fix and we're not in that position. There's also one-time items like capital outlay, let's say, where you're going to be way low or way high depending on when those projects are done. And then in terms of revenue, as Ms. Garcia had mentioned in prior months, when the taxes are received, like property taxes that are received every quarter, you will see months when it lags. But then when the money is received, then you'll see that kind of, so you'll see that cycle. The, the area of concern for revenue, as we've talked about in the past, is in our permits area. You'll see the information there where our permits are much lower than they have been in the past year. So that's something that staff will continue to monitor and, and we will come back to you if any adjustments need to be made. So those are the things that, at least from staff's perspective, are areas of concern. We're also looking at overtime closely and we're doing a pretty good job in maintaining that overtime, but that's also very cyclical. So you're going to see, especially in summer months, you're going to see that be a lot higher. And so even though we're doing fairly well in that area, we are anticipating that we're going to exceed our overtime budget. So that's something that we'll probably need to talk about in the next couple of months when we start getting into biennial budget adjustments. And with that, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Do we have any questions? Seeing Mr. Peralas.
I feel like we should probably make a comment, just one. No, I appreciate, I guess we're, based on what I'm seeing, we're living within our means, but, you know, is there any delayed purchases that are going to be coming to fruition in the next couple of months before the end of the year?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that again?
Is there any, sorry, delayed purchases that are going to come within the next five months that would kind of skew these numbers negatively?
Not in your salaries and supplies. Usually we, you, you might see some bigger purchases that happen. But staff is, we manage those budgets as if you're going to buy something big, we usually will not buy something else. And that's how we have traditionally managed those budgets. If there's something really big that comes up, it's usually a surprise.
Okay.
And, and we will come to you for that.
Okay. Yeah, no, it seems like, it seems like revenue's tracking with our budget. I mean, it's kind of coming in. I mean, I think I saw, sales tax was only slight, it was slightly up from last year. No, everything looks good. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Peralas. With no further questions or comments from council, it moves us along to item number nine. Hearings and council action on our, hearings and council action on ordinances and resolutions relating thereto and unlisted. Moves us along to item number 10. We have two items, which are ordinances and resolutions not relating to hearings. Item A is resolution number 4624, Interlocal Agreement with Franklin, Franklin County for Solid Waste Comprehensive Management Plan. Ms. Sigdel, looks like it's going to you.
Thank you, Mayor, and evening, council. This is an interlocal agreement, which is essentially an agreement for us to all partner in this endeavor together. So there is no financial impact yet. And if there is, then we will be coming back to council to get your guidance in the future. But this interlocal agreement is essentially for the county and, and us to come together and work on a solid waste plan. A BDI would also be involved to ensure that we have a good comprehensive plan. Last time it was updated, it was in 2015, so we're due to update this plan again. And BDI, rightfully so, is anticipating some requirements from the state that they are anxious to ensure that we all get together to, to figure out how we mitigate that if they come to fruition as well. So there's a lot of, a lot of issues that they're anticipating that they, they want to ensure all of the partners are coming to the table and discussing the issue. So that's what the interlocal agreement is about.
Thank you. Before we get any additional comments or questions, I'll just throw in my two cents. I sit on the Solid Waste Advisory Committee with a couple of our professional staff on behalf of the city of Pasco. Last week, we had our meeting. There were three chapters that were in draft form. We've hired a consultant. As Ms. Sigdel indicated, we are kind of passed through on implementing this. There are some requirements from the state, specifically in the area of bio solids and waste diversion, which likely are going to, costs are going to increase costs to the consumer. Not surprisingly, I don't think BDI nor the city should be on the hook nor any other jurisdiction. Again, we have all the cities, so Conell and the county itself are all participants in this. We're trying to tackle this as best as possible, realizing it's, since it's been quite some time since this was updated, there's some holes that due to new legislation. But again, I would anticipate that as this is adopted, implementing or incorporating new legislation, you're going to see things that are going to bind the county to acting in different behaviors that are going to cost increased costs. So if you have a problem with it, two, two resolution points, or I guess three, one, you can come here. We really have no say other than an advisory role. You could attend the Solid Waste Advisory Committee meetings and voice your opinion there. And the third one, which whether or not it's effective is up to you. You can go to Olympia and lobby for them to change their minds. But we're doing what we're told to do. It's not necessarily a comfortable position. But there are things that we're having to do and there's a whole issue with organ legislation and how they divert waste and some of the things we send down there. So more to come, but that's, that's what's happening with solid waste in this area. We've kind of lagged behind legislation and it's going to cost them implementation dollars. Mr. Peralas.
I was just going to ask you a question, Mayor. Do you foresee rate increase with BDI?
Um, I mean, I would anticipate it. I can't guarantee it. I hope it's minimal. But again, I mean, you're talking about diverting waste streams that are, you know, potential whole new areas and landfills that may be required. So it's, it's not an insignificant change to the way we do things here. And it's, it's kind of frustrating because it seems to be working, but Olympia likes to break what's, what's fixed. I'll leave it there. Any additional comments or questions? Sorry to kind of dovetail too far off there.
No, thank you so much. You, you added a lot more to the issue.
With that, Mr. Melanie.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve resolution number 4624 authorizing the interim city manager to execute the interlocal agreement with Franklin County and the city of Pasco for the Solid Waste Comprehensive Management Plan.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Passed unanimously. Moves us along to item 10B, which is resolution number 4625, Boys and Girls Club of Benton and Franklin County lease. Ms. Sigdel stays with you, I guess.
Thank you, Mayor, and evening, council. The, the item in front of you, I'm going to give a little bit of history. The club that we just talked about, number one club in Boys and Girls Club universe, it is a building that the city owns and the land underneath is the school district. So that is a building that was transferred to the city way back in the, in the 1990s. And we've leased it to Boys and Girls Club for about the same amount of time. We recently, in the last couple of years, renewed our lease with Boys and Girls Club and also allocated $1.26 million of ARPA funds to renovate because the facility is quite old and, and requires a lot of renovation for future use. What Boys and Girls Club is also doing is trying to leverage that public funding to additional public funding and private funding. And they're looking, they've received close to $800 and something dollars from our Washington State Legislature. Nikki Torres worked really hard to provide this funding to Boys and Girls Club. However, when a state or a federal agency provides funding for a building or a specific purpose, they'll want an assurance that it will be used for that same purpose for about, usually an average is 10 years. And what you're seeing is a restrictive covenant. And I will ask our attorney, who understands the documents a lot better, to, to step in if I get anything wrong. But essentially what it would mean is that we, we would be using this for youth purposes, for the purposes of the grant with Boys and Girls Club for the next 10 years, that we will not take this money, make the building really nice, and then, you know, two years from now, go and sell it to, let's say, a private entity and it's not used for youth purposes. So that is the covenant because we own the building. Department of Commerce requires for us to get into the restrictive covenant with, with the state. So that is the action in front of you today. And with that, we also have Brian Ace, Executive Director for Boys and Girls Club, here for any questions that you might have and also our attorney for anything that he might want to add.
Great, thank you. So a couple of things, the, two of the documents that are being, the council's asking to, we're asking council to authorize are a leasehold deed of trust, and I'm not going to drag us all through the nuances of that, but essentially the long and short of it is what you're agreeing to, you have a lease, the city of Pasco has a lease with the Boys and Girls Club, and they now are granting someone else what we call a leasehold interest or a leasehold estate in that lease. And essentially what you're doing in the first document is you're consenting to allow them to do that. Not really much to do with the city, except for, there's a couple of things I just wanted to highlight to make sure that you're all aware. Some of the things that would, it would really potentially have some kind of effect on the city down the road would be 1.1, which talks about how a lease shall not be materially modified or changed in any way without the written consent of the beneficiary. Beneficiary is the Department of Commerce. So typically, contracts can be amended and can be modified in ways if, as long as both the parties agree to do that in writing. Now you're adding somebody else to the party. They would have to also agree if you want to decide to modify your lease. So that is a material difference of what you have now. The other thing that I just would highlight with regard to the leasehold deed of trust is that in the event, 1.3 states that in the event the less seen shall fail to make a payment due on the lease or perform any term or covenant as provided herein, the addition to which any default constituting a default under this deed of trust, the beneficiary may at its option make the defaulted payments or perform the term or covenant and add the same to the amount due under this deed of trust. So essentially what that is, is that's a lot of language to say. Department of Commerce, if, if the Boys and Girls Club defaulted, you could, you would have to allow two things. Either one, allow Department of Commerce or somebody else that they want to take over the, the obligation that they signed with Boys and Girls Club. You'd have to allow them to do that and, or you'd have, or, excuse me, or you would have to allow them to make the payments on behalf of Boys and Girls Club. So long and short of it is, you're just granting someone else an interest in a lease that you previously signed. So that's the leasehold deed of trust, the restrictive covenant. That is where you are actually, what we call contract privy. You're, you're signing a contract with the Department of Commerce, excuse me, and you are saying that you will restrict, it's your covenant, which is something that's recorded and it's enforceable on the property and runs with the land. Essentially what you're saying is that you're only going to allow that property to be used for that certain purpose. It's no different than a covenant, you know, in homeowners association situation on your, your property. So essentially the things that I just want to make sure you're aware with that, the three things that really would have an effect on, on the city. The first one, as mentioned previously by Deputy City Manager, was that the grant or, or its granters, its successors and are assigned for, assigned for the period stated above, shall herein describe real property, that's ours, shall on the herein property, real property, Boys and Girls Club, youth, for youth and benefits to the community as specified in the Commerce. in the commerce contract. So essentially, you have to have your covenant to allow a Boys and Girls Club. Now, if, if Boys and Girls Club of Benton Franklin County defaults or whatever, you're not bound, they can't make you not default on your lease with them, but you still would have to have a Boys and Girls Club in this property for this 10-year period. The second thing is that the grantor shall require operator tenants and lesssees to abide by all state and local codes, licenses, requirements. So they're, they're adding that layer to the city to make sure that whoever is in that building is following the, the rules and regulations of not just the state, but also the local government agencies. And then finally, got to make sure that the grantor, which is the city of Pasco, keeps any records and makes any reports relating to compliance with the covenant to the Department of Commerce. So it is adding some additional requirements, the second part, second portion of the restrictive covenant, because you are directly in a contract with the Department of Commerce. The first one, you're just consenting to allow Boys and Girls Club to enter that agreement to be able to allow them to have a leasehold estate.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments? Just one quick question, Mr. Comment. You mentioned if, not that I foresee this, if Boys and Girls Club Benton Franklin County default, we'd have to have a Boys and Girls Club, or is it a Boys and Girls Club or similar program? In other words, if some after-school program or something like that were to want to take over, how does that read, the specific to the entity or something similar?
Sure. So it, it says, the grantor, the grantor, its successors and or assigns for a period as stated above, shall provide on the herein described real property, a Boys and Girls Club for youth that benefits the community, comma, as specified in commerce contract number 24-96647. So if Mr. Ace has some more information about that, I could find some more information about what is specified in that agreement. That's obviously between them and Department of Commerce, and we can, we can get that information. But it sounds like you're going to be limited to a Boys and Girls Club.
Okay. All right. I, I think, I mean, obviously, the restriction sounds pretty limited, but Mr. Ace, I, I believe you anticipate on staying in our community a while?
That is the hope.
Okay.
We're adjusting the building accordingly, thanks to your support and the support of the state private donors.
Yeah. Well, and I know you guys are working your tails off and, you know, I mean, I think what I want the, or we want the public to know is, one, we don't take leasing our property just lightly. When we do it for a period of something like 10 years, we see ourselves as partner agencies or entities. Certainly what we have had with your organization for quite some time, provided tremendous benefit to our community, and equally importantly, you're working your tails off to stay funded. So I guess in the event that you do start to see financial struggles, please advise us and, and maybe we'll work that commerce contract, but God willing, you're a partner for at least 10 more years because you've been phenomenal, as has your team. And I know the kids have been great recipients, so it's been awesome to see the kids coming out of that club and, you know, the Keystone Kids and, and, you know, we're very proud of our youth. Any further comments or questions? Seeing none, Mr. Milne.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve Resolution Number 4625, authorizing the interim city manager to sign and execute a leasehold deed of trust and restrictive covenant for contract number
Second.
Got a motion from Mr. Milne, second from Ms. Peralhas. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. That passes unanimously. That moves us along to Item Number 11, unfinished business, nonlisted. Item 12, new business, Resolution Number 4626, approving the employment agreement for the city, for the position of city manager. Mr. Ferguson, looks like they're all just kidding, Mr. Zabel, looks like it's you.
I'm just going to do a, a quick intro, council, because while the item pertains to unemployment agreement for your next city manager, this is not something the city does that often, thankfully. And I, I want the public to be aware of the amount of work the council went into this selection, starting with the selection of a recruiting firm, which went out on a nationwide search at the direction of council, and that search yielded approximately 60 applicants. We whittled that list down, qualified applicants, down to around a dozen or so after thorough interviews and initial background screening. Those candidates were brought to and reviewed by council in executive session, and out of that dozen, the council selected three to move forward to the finalist process. So that's much of what the public seen in the last couple of weeks. About a week and a half ago, I guess about eight days ago, we were at a, a public reception over at the Red Lion, where we had a, several dozen members of the community came, met those candidates. That also included an executive session for council to have a bit of an informal meeting of those candidates. Yeah, just kind of get a sense of who they were and for them also to, to get a sense of the community members. They obviously did their homework, you know, folks at that level in their profession, we're talking folks with a couple decades plus of experience. They had, they had done their homework and, and got to know the city the best they could through documents and their own research, some time on the ground within the city. But meeting, having the opportunity to meet community members, listen to their questions, answer their questions, and learn about our city, I think was valuable to those candidates and certainly, hopefully to council. The next day was a pretty solid day of interviews of those three candidates by the city council as a whole, as well as the panel of your senior staff members, which included at the end of that about an hour and a half or so debrief, at which time council went into executive session and at that point in time identified a preferred candidate. Negotiations commenced during the week and happy to be able to report to council that those were successful. And we met earlier tonight to go over the parameters of those. With that, I'm going to turn it over to the city attorney.
Great, yeah, so not much else to add, other than the fact that obviously, we've had an open and competitive process. Council has gone over all the qualifications and been able to look at all the candidates and then now needs to make up on selection in open session and, and determine who that person is. And then I will submit as part of Exhibit A, an employment agreement for that particular candidate to the city clerk, and that will be uploaded in the pack, and that will be the employment agreement that you select for the person that you choose, should you decide to do so tonight.
Thank you.
Do we have any comments here?
I guess with that, do you want, do any discussion or just the motion?
Totally up to the council. If council would like to discuss it or make a motion, whatever works.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll, I'll throw my two cents out here. This is like the third or fourth we've gone through with various interim city managers. As Mr. Zabel said, it was quite a competitive process. And where we ended up landing, you know, hopefully we have a motion here in a minute, I think, I think the city's going to be really well served. I look forward to seeing the skill sets this individual brings in. I look forward to working with the individual, and I think it's, you know, it's an opportunity. You've got to, I mean, I'll, I'll just speak and brag about us. I think we've got a phenomenal council, who's got a great vision for city and where it's going, where it's been, where it needs to go. And I think the individual that we've selected, if that person can come on board, will really benefit that vision. Mr. Grim?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to add that I just wanted to thank all of the candidates that actually applied and went through the process and even the finalists who came out and spent the better part of a bulk of a 24-hour period interviewing and relating and conversing with staff and council. And I also appreciate staff spending the time to, especially Ms. Mattson, trying to, you know, dig to the bottom, find the nitty gritty of all the candidates and just really just give us the, the best information available to make a decision. So thank you.
Thank you. With that, Mr. Milne, you have a motion for?
I do, Mayor. I move to approve Resolution Number 4626, approving the employment agreement for Harold Stewart for the position of city manager.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That passes unanimously. With that, I'd like to, you know, congratulate staff for the hard work. Mr. Stewart, look forward to working with him. You know, not to jump ahead of ourselves, but Mr. Zabel, it's been a pleasure having you back here. We'll kick you out the door here when the time's appropriate, but we really appreciate it. You know, kind of, we're pretty instrumental in my being kicked off as a council member, and it's hard to believe it's been eight years, but we'll keep you as long as we got you, which I know is pretty short-term. So again, thank you for your dual added role in this effort, and thank you for helping keep the ship afloat.
You're welcome. Thank you. And last meeting, I have a few words to say.
Perfect.
Nice words.
Nice words.
Sure. I'll hold you to it.
With that, it moves along to 13, which are miscellaneous discussion. Mr. Zabel, we have any?
None this evening.
Council? Ms. Blaisdell?
Thank you. I just want to remind everyone, this weekend is boat race weekend, so it would be good to come on the Pasco side, but enjoy the boat races either Friday, Saturday, or Sunday Pasco or to go to Xide.
Excellent. Thank you for that plug, Mr. Prowls.
Appreciate it, Mayor. I'll be quick. I sent an email earlier to interim, interim city manager, Zabel, about, I, I brought this up before, to bring regards to the right-of-way reduction in vacationing. I know Mayor Portem, Milne, told me to bring him back when we were kind of all here, and so I can go over the benefits, but I, you know, I sent the email. I think the benefits are really advantageous to the community. It will enhance housing infill. A lot of communities are already doing it, Spokane, Boise, Portland, and, and then it will increase land values, property values to landowners. So I just wanted to throw it out there. I did have a letter signed by builders and developers. They, they like this idea, and so I just want to see if we can get it vetted and perhaps eventually vote on something like this. So that's my ask for that, to get some head nods and maybe the staff can work on it.
Go ahead.
Sorry, I wasn't, I wasn't clear what they asked for?
Oh, to, for, to direct staff to look into the right-of-way slash vacationing item that I brought up a couple of weeks ago at the budget meeting. And I sent a letter, but probably didn't get to anyone. It was signed by Century 21, Cadence Engineering, and a couple builders and developers. They're, they're in support of it.
I, I'd say I'm open to this. I think I'd like staff to look at what are next. Well, I mean, it's, it's tough to gauge. It's typically, I'd say 60 to 90 days, but I know that hopefully here quickly, we'll be making our transition. I wonder if it's better served for when we have a new city manager?
Yeah, no, I'm not looking for nothing before Dave leaves now.
Okay.
I mean, yeah, so we have a timeframe, yeah.
So.
90 days out, you know.
Yeah, I'm, I'm open to looking.
Just a matter of looking at it.
Comparing in particular, like the variations of the cities here locally comparatively.
Right, right.
I, I think there's value in looking at that. Mr. Reps, are you on?
Those are going to be my comments exactly. Maybe putting it on our to-do list, waiting till Mr. Stewart's here in his position and maybe kicking it off then, but it is something that I would support and would be interested in finding out more about.
Thank you. So that's three that are interested. Anyone else? Okay. C2 had nods, so I think this is an issue, not a burning issue, but one that, you know, we can have looked at, so probably come from you, Ms. Miller, but I'm not going to direct you directly. So there we go. Anything else, Mr.?
Yeah, and lastly, to me, this is a burning issue. I, I think we've kind of heard about it a lot, and I would say, I would just term it under quality of life issues. We had many people come tonight. I've met with a couple of people who spoke tonight, whether it's fireworks, noise ordinances. I know we're busy, but I, I think we need to always be looking to make our community better for the people who call Pasco home. Whether it's looking at the noise ordinances and start talking about fireworks, I, I, you know, I want to just look to the people to my right. I think we need to really vet some of these issues, in particular for fireworks, getting something from Pascopedia perhaps about enforcing our, our codes and ordinances better. I know they're running around, the fire department's running around, but if we're going to continue allowing fireworks in the city of Pasco, people need to be able to police themselves. They got to be, they got to be responsible. And so when that's not happening, we need to make decisions. And like people said earlier, there's people with PTSD, are veterans, we, there's other people we got to think about. So whether it's the fireworks, the noise ordinances, I mean, I would not want to live, I'd still want to live in Pasco, but I could not live next to someone who's continuously has construction noise all day long, on the weekends, can't sit on your porch. These are the everyday community issues that we got voted in to address, and so I think we need to be working towards that. I know we have a lot of changes, but not adding any asks today, but I'm pretty sure these individuals are going to keep continuing to come to city council meetings, looking for us to do something. So just, I'll get off my pedestal, but we need to really think about it, and maybe with the new city manager, we can look at more of these quality of life issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Prowls. Ms. Peralhas, I see you're on.
Yes, I, just a quick comment in regards to the fireworks conversations. I do appreciate people coming in and giving, sharing your comments and bringing the issues up. It did take a long time to, a huge discussion to figure out, you know, lifting the ban when we did a few years ago. But for the purpose of transparency, for the purpose of you, the people of the city of Pasco, I would like to request that Mr. Peralhas recuse himself from conversations in regards to fireworks, being that a couple of meetings ago, he did mention that he sells fireworks. So I think the conversations would be better led by someone that does not have a game as far as the sale of fireworks. Not causing, not mentioning this to cause any sort of back and forth today.
I'm going to address it, I have to, so.
But again, these were your words, and in consideration of the people that do have all these issues happening, whether it's because they're loud, I know I brought that up myself. There's a lot of issues in the community as far as people that are elderly and cannot tolerate the noise. Again, we appreciate that you bring that up. We appreciate that you sent your emails over. Keep doing that because eventually we'll, we'll have some change. But again, it's because of you, the people, that bring that to us. Thanks.
Thanks. Before I get to you, I just want to respond. You know, as Ms. Peralhas mentioned, you know, I can't speak to Mr. Prowls and that stuff, but I, I do remember sitting on council several years ago, and as we penciled it out, you know, there's really no net benefit to, from a noise perspective, and even from a safety or enforcement perspective, especially from what I saw from Chisfroski's PowerPoint slide deck, I think, two weeks ago, of having the ban as it was. I am adamantly opposed to reinstituting a ban. I've not seen any data that indicates there's any life or safety benefit to going backwards. Does that mean that it's inconvenient to have the noise or to have the risk? Yes. That inconvenience exists regardless of whether those particular fireworks are legal or not. And until I see otherwise, you're not going to convince me that reinstituting the ban is going to be beneficial to our community. So that's, that's a position I've taken. I see people disagreeing, that's fine, but I, I don't see any benefit to going there. Mr. Prowls?
No, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to address the comment by council member Peralhas. I just want to make it clear, I don't sell them. I was a volunteer and, you know, when I took, took this oath, I wanted this to be really nonpartisan, but I volunteer with the Franklin County Republican Party and we sell them. That's what we do at the track. I'll still fight tooth and nail, we have the best prices in the tri-cities, but that's what it is. I don't really, I don't sell them. It's not a family-owned business, something like that. I volunteer, and that's what I do, did that, hundred of your others. So again, if it came off like I own a permit to sell them, I don't, I just volunteer. So I'll make that very clear.
Thank you for that clarity. Mr. Grim?
Thank you. Just real briefly, I just see this as two separate issues, Mr. Mayor, fireworks and a no, noise ordinance issue, and if we were to look at our noise ordinance per se, I would be willing to do those. So after our new city manager's taken this oath, thank you.
Mr. Milne?
Milne? Thank you, Mayor. I was also one of the ones that was advocate for the taking the ban on fireworks, and I know I've done police ride-alongs on Fourth of July quite regularly, and I can say, yay, I am dismayed on what goes on, but I think as a councilman, as a concerned citizen, we want the Pasco Fire Department, or Pasco Police Department, sorry, going after the people that are shooting the legal ones. And it seemed like when I was, got on council, there were so many calls for people with sparklers and little stuff that they were really overwhelmed. So I'll say this is great, and obviously, if we had more money, we'd have more police, but I do believe that our police department is doing the best they can with the finances that they can, and so unless I see otherwise from Chief of Police Ken Roski, I would have to consider... to consider, stand by my vote, and would I like to see it better? Yes, 100%. But until I hear otherwise, that we have a better option for this, I think we just need to keep doing what we can, and again, keep backing up our police force, because I know they are trying their very best in the situations, and that's why I do police ride-alongs pretty much every year, to see what goes on, so I have a better, better ability to vote, what I think my district wants. So thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further lights, that moves us along to Item 14, executive session. We need the second one. It's discussion with legal counsel about current or potential litigation under Revised Code of Washington 42.30.110, subsection 1, Roman numeral 1, or letter I. It's listed for 10 minutes. We're going to have the city attorney, interim city manager?
Deputy city manager and outside counsel.
Okay, so the city attorney, outside counsel, interim city manager, deputy city manager, and the CED director. All right. With that, it is, we'll call it 8:44 for 10 minutes, so we should be back by 8:54. It is nine o'clock. We've returned from executive section, with, executive session with no action taken. That moves us along to Item 15, which is adjournment. It is nine o'clock, and our meeting is adjourned. Thank you for joining us.